Kuyto ngamit paglalayang Ing labot na pagkabagabag Laway ma panagan ka hidiran na talan Kahita lumanan tangganan Ni alintana sapakat marun ka Ni umlusopik haki at kabiliman Ang tadi Marihiya sa puso ni man Itay talan ang kalangitan Ninglingo ay walang pagmamali Inang sinta inang gibigi Talawak kami alintana Sa kalangitan si talawak Laway matinatukan hidaga ni nitin Marihiya sa puso ni man Itay talan ang kalangitan Ninglingo ay walang pagmamali Inang sinta inang gibigi Marihiya sa puso ni man Itay talan ang kalangitan Ninglingo ay walang pagmamali Inang sinta inang gibigi
Bayang maginil pero saksin ang anan Alam ng puso sa tipidoy buhay Lupang hinirang duyan ka ng magiting Sa malulupit di ka pasisiin Sa dagat at punok, sa simoy at sa langit mong bukaw May lilagang tula at kawit sa paglayang minamahal Ang kisap ng watawat moy tagumpay nalang diningin Ang bituin at araw nga kailan pa may magitinin Lupan ang araw na walhatin pagsinta Buhay langit sa piling mo Ang inigaya na pag may mag-aapi Ang mamatay ng dahil sa'yo
Good morning, Ateneo. Welcome to the 3rd University Town Hall meeting with the President. I'm Father John G. Sumpaiko of the Society of Jesus. And for this morning, I will be your host and moderator. Thank you for taking time to join us today. As an additional note, we will be making this Town Hall available on the university YouTube channel later for those who cannot attend. We start the week and close the month of May with a series of updated updates regarding our university's COVID-19 initiatives. The announcement of the university vaccination plan last Thursday (May 27) is a big development in our pandemic response. Today, Father Bobby App of the Society of Jesus, university president, will be joined by our vice president for human resources, Dr. Mavik Cortez, to give updates to the community and to answer our many questions about these efforts. Many questions about the vaccination program have come in via ateneo.edu/townhall/ask. If you still want to ask a question, you may proceed to ateneo.edu/townhall/ask. The form will be closed 50 minutes before our event ends. So putting your questions now, we now turn you over to Father Bobby and Dr. Mavik.
Thank you, Father John G. Today, the Town Hall will focus on 3 university programs that will directly affect the community, particularly our coworkers and mission partners. First off, is the university vaccination program. The memorandum #U20202153 released last Thursday outlines the basics of the university vaccination program, or UVP, and we will discuss salient points in today's gathering. After the UVP, we will discuss 2 new programs: the Solidarity Fund and Blue Aid. These 2 programs are a way of further extending assistance to our employees and a sent avenue to strengthen our community as we continue to face the crises together. First on today's agenda is the university vaccination program. The UVP has been in the works since December 2020 and we formally launched it last week, last Thursday. The UVP has 2 main objectives: to protect the members of the Ateneo community against the severe effects of COVID-19 by vaccinating those who are eligible; and second, as our contribution to the larger goal of protecting the population of the National Capital Region Plus against the virus. First, a few notes: we highly encourage members of the community to get vaccinated as soon as possible. We have mentioned this already in previous Town Halls, but we repeat it again: we highly encourage members of the community to get vaccinated as soon as possible. Poe Francis has suggested that people have a moral obligation to receive one of the coronavirus vaccines as soon as possible. He said: "I believe that morally everyone must take the vaccine" in a January 10 interview. He continues:[600.64][600.79]"It is the moral choice because it is about your life, but also the lives of others." If you are already eligible in the vaccination programs of our government, particularly through the LGUs, to your local government unit, please go, please go, and have your shot as soon as possible. Please avail of the vaccination programs that the LGUs are providing for us for free. If you are eligible, please go and have your shot taken as soon as possible. This is because of 2 uncertainties in our Ateneo vaccination program. Despite having placed orders already, and we have placed orders several months ago, we are not guaranteed of the number of doses we will receive, nor are we guaranteed of a date when these will arrive. These are really uncertainties. We do not know, as of today, when the vaccines we ordered will arrive. Also, we do not know how many of the order that we made we will be able to receive. So that is why if you can already get vaccinated through the LGU, please do so. The university vaccination program aims to vaccinate as many, as many people as possible, depending on the supply we receive. And our prioritization programs will also follow those set by the government. We have set our own Ateneo prioritization program for the supplies we will receive and which we will procure, but government has asked that even if we have our own vaccination program, we will still need to follow the prioritization set by the DOH and IATF. We cannot go faster than what the government has set. So I hope that that is clear and understood. I now turn you over to our vice president for human resources, Dr. Mavik Cortez, to explain to us more in detail the university vaccination program. Mavik?
Thank you, Father. In our university vaccination program, we have set up the following priority groups. Number 1, Group 1 is composed of our full-time employees, regardless of employment status. So whether you are regular, permanent, or probationary, you are included in Group 1. Secondly, our part-time employees. For our part-time faculty members who are regularly being engaged or hired by the schools for the past 2 school years, they are considered on active employment even if they don't have a load and will be included in the master list, as I mentioned earlier, even with no active teaching load at the time of the enlistment or the inoculation. Thirdly, we also included employees under temporary employment or our project employees. And the fourth in our first group will be the Jesuits. Okay? In the second group, this will be composed of our independent contractors like our researchers and guest lecturers, and the employees of our affiliate units. In the guidelines, we have listed down the affiliate units that will qualify under Group 2. And for the third group, we have our university students as long as they are 18 years old and above. And then for Group 4, these are the dependents of our employees. Details of these prioritization groupings can be found on the COVID-19 website. We also have availed of the services of AC Health. It's an Ayala company for the administration of the vaccines. Next slide, please. AC Health will run the following tasks for us as part of their service. They will be in charge of master listing and scheduling of vaccine administration. They will also supply to us the consumables necessary for vaccine administration, and then the vaccine administration itself, and surveillance or follow-up for adverse events following immunization. So this will run for 12 months or 1 year. In the first 2 months, the follow-up will be every 2 weeks. And lastly, they will also provide us with materials for science and education communication. As we earlier informed the community, we have ordered Moderna and Covavax vaccines. Covavax is made by NovaVax with the assistance of Management Association of the Philippines for Moderna and Unilab for Covavax. Of course, you will know which one, which vaccine will be administered to you, but you cannot choose the vaccine brand that will be administered. So those under Group 1 plus the scholars under Group 3 will have their vaccine and its administration cost fully subsidized by the university. All others will have to shoulder the cost of the vaccine and the service fee. There will be 5 main steps in the vaccination program. These are necessary to have better coordination with AC Health and an organized system in the administration of the vaccine. The first step is the enlistment and master listing. So the first step is the enlistment and master listing, which will be handled by ORMOD. Once the master list is completed, this will be uploaded to AC Health's Health Now app, which will be used for the actual registration. After the registration, AC Health will conduct the prioritization and screening of those already eligible for vaccination following government protocols. Then they will be scheduled for the actual administration of the vaccine. We have identified the LS Covavax courts as our vaccination site. This is the same venue where AC Health is one of its vaccination sites. Details of the actual vaccination process will be given to you once you are given a schedule through the Health Now app.
Thank you, Father Bobby and Dr. Mavik. We all have some questions about the UVP. Our first question is for Father Bobby: "If I have been vaccinated through LGU, can I still avail of the university vaccine? And how will you identify those who have not yet been vaccinated by the LGU?"
Thank you for the question, Father John G. The medical advice on having different vaccines or being vaccinated more than 2 doses during a certain period of time is still vague and ambiguous. We still really do not know how to proceed for those cases. In step 1 of our university vaccination program, you will confirm to ORMOD your interest in the vaccine. If you have already been vaccinated through the LGU, please provide info on the schedules of your job and the vaccine brand administered to you. This is for our health record purposes for our employees. You will no longer be counted among those eligible for the vaccine that the Ateneo will provide. But we would also want to have account to the dependents wishing in this as nearly as now, even if a separate registration is yet to be scheduled for them for the ADMO Group 4, which will cover dependents.
Our next question is for Ma'am Mavik: "For employees based in another city outside ENCR, can we get vaccinated without having to go to Quezon City through your partnership with Ayala Health?"
The vaccines that Ateneo is procuring will be delivered and stored in the facilities that Ayala Health will set up in the Loyola Heights campus. So the administration of the vaccines by Ayala Health needs to be on campus at the LS, needs to be done on campus at the LS Covavax.
Father Mavik, how much is the vaccination per dependent?
The vaccine for a dependent will be provided at cost, depending on the brand. Moderna will cost 4,000 for 2 doses. Covavax will cost 2,000 for 2 doses. The admin fee that will be charged will be 850 pesos for the 2 jobs. Payment for the vaccines for the dependents will be through salary deduction.
Ma'am Mavik, can the dependent include household helpers and caregivers?
I'm sorry, but no, the household helpers and caregivers are not included. So please encourage them to avail of the vaccines from the LGU's. Dependents included in Group 4 of the guidelines are the following: the spouse, children, parents, and siblings for our single employee.
Father Bobby, this next question is for you: "If the employee has already been vaccinated by the LGU, is there a chance to give his or her free slot to one dependent? Meaning, one dependent will no longer have to pay for the vaccine?"
Those who can get vaccinated by the LGU are really strongly encouraged to do so, as I have been repeating, because this will allow more people in our community to avail of our limited supplies. We will distribute our supplies according to the DOH, IATF prioritization, and according to our ADMO priority groups. We will distribute our supplies and vaccinate people until our supplies run out. We do not guarantee that there will be enough vaccines for all dependents who wish to be vaccinated. At this time, as I said, we are still uncertain as to the quantities we will receive and when.
Ma'am Mavik, will scholars be given priority once the vaccination for Group 3 has started?
Similar to the other groups, we will also follow the DOH prioritization within Group 3, so the students. So we'll go by A1, so wala, A2, and A3. So we'll follow that prioritization. But cost of vaccines and service fee for administration will be fully subsidized by the university for the scholars.
Father Bob, is there a possibility that all of the doses will be used by Groups 1 and 2, thus not having vaccines anymore for Groups 3 and 4?
Yes, that is a possibility because we ordered 18,000 doses. 8,000 doses of Moderna, 4,000 doses of, ah, sorry, 8,000 doses of Moderna and 10,000 doses of Covavax. That's good for 9,000 people at 2 doses per person. But as I said in my pre-notes, we are still uncertain how many doses we will actually receive and when. We also do not know how many people will express interest in receiving the vaccines through our Ateneo program until we have completed the master list. So we cannot really give a straight answer to that question until we have completed the master list and match them with the supplies that we will be able to receive. At present, we are still compiling the master list for Group 1 for the Ateneo employees.
Ma'am Mavik, this question is for you: "Do I still need to register my son as a dependent for Group 4 even if he is already part of Group 3 as an incoming freshman in LS? How will you go about the vaccination of those in Group 3? Would it be by school or by course?"
So at present, as Father mentioned, we're still compiling the master list for Group 1 for our employees, but with initial indication of the depend, of the dependents, so that we can get a total count of dependents. But this is not yet the enlistment step for the other groups. This is just the enlistment step for Group 1. Subsequently, we will issue more detailed instructions for the other groups, including Group 3, our university students. So just please wait for further instructions from ORMOD on the enlistment for the others.
Thank you, Ma'am Mavik. We have new questions for today, which just came in: "Father Bobby, will the university's rate of vaccination, first or second dosage, be the basis for reopening the school?"
Reopening the schools in for face-to-face, in-person classes is dependent on the guidelines and rules that will be issued by the government agencies: IATF, DOH, DepEd, CHED, LGUQC, LGU Macati, LGU Pasig. At this time, it is unclear, it is not clear whether vaccination can or will be required as a condition for reopening. So far, for employees, DOLE has issued a directive that vaccination cannot be compulsory in order for an employee to return to work. So the answer to the question really is where we, it's not very clear whether you can make vaccination the basis for reopening the schools because we need to follow government guidelines.
Thank you, Father Bobby. Ma'am Mavik, this is another question for you: "Since my husband and I, both employees of the Ateneo, had our vaccination through the LGU initiative, can we have our daughter, a student of the Ateneo, to take our place for vaccination? She is a 3rd-year student at the Ateneo."
Your daughter will be considered in Group 3 under the Group 4 students based on our ADMO prioritization groups. And all groups will also be vaccinated according to the DOH and IATF guidelines. So there's no substitution necessary for, for this case.
Thank you, Pa. Father Bobby, this question: "If an employee makes a reservation for vaccine, but later decides to change his or her mind, would the employee still be liable for payment?"
Yes, we'd like to repeat: vaccination for employees, whether full-time or part-time, will be fully subsidized. That is, the cost of the vaccine and the cost of the administration, fully subsidized, so there will be no payment necessary. It is for vaccination for the dependents where we will charge at cost, and as we said, that will be paid through salary deduction. Now, vaccination is of course voluntary, even in this Ateneo program, and even if people enlist, they can change their mind. Employees or dependents, they can change their mind. Now, if the dependent changes their mind, then of course the employee will not be charged, will not be liable for payment.
We have had a lot of questions as regard to the vaccines, but we are moving towards 2 more topics that we have to discuss. So now we move on to the next topic: the Solidarity Fund. Father Bobby and Dr. Mavik, can you enlighten us on this?
This is a new program that we would like to pursue, and we will issue a memo which will explain in writing what we will be going to say during this Town Hall: the Solidarity Fund. Getting COVID-19 is not just scary, it is also expensive. In many cases, existing healthcare plans, even ours, cannot cover the high costs of the COVID-19 treatment. Thus, we found it necessary to launch a program that would provide an additional source of funds for employees and their family members who may get sick because of the COVID-19. And as the name suggests, it is also a way for members of the community to help each other out financially. Again, I turn over to Dr. Mavik to explain the details of the Solidarity Fund.
The Solidarity Fund covers all university employees and their family members as outlined in your screens. So you will see there are two columns, one for members of our healthcare plan and uh to the right uh side would be the uh non-members of our healthcare plan. So we outline there the family members who may avail of this assistance, okay? Both those who are part of the healthcare plan as well as those who are not can avail of the financial assistance in case uh you or your family member gets stricken with COVID. So those who are under the healthcare plan, these are the existing benefits related to COVID nineteen affliction. Number one is confinement. In case of confinement, you may use the maximum benefit limit of one hundred thousand, inclusive of cost of tests, P P Es, and other costs related to um management of the of patient care. Number two, the actual cost of swab testing for symptomatic member with the corresponding request for such a test from the attending physician. So please remember that there should always be a request from your attending physician for this cost to be covered. Then there's our existing financial assistance program in case the maximum benefit limit under the university healthcare plan is exceeded after deduction of field health benefits. As you can see, the amount of financial assistance will vary based on case severity. So in a way, we followed the the appreciation of field health on the case severity. So guidelines for this program were circulated when this was launched in September twenty twenty. And um actually today, the the program um is expiring today, but because of this uh launch of the Solidarity Fund, uh we have an extension of this program for another year. So so far, uh we have already assisted four members of the healthcare plan uh through this financial assistance program. On top of this be- benefits and financial assistance program, we have extended some financial assistance under the Solidarity Fund for family members as defined. Parents, siblings for single employees, and spouse and children up to twenty-one years old but who are not enrolled in the university healthcare plan. You will be able to avail of a one-time swab testing for up to two symptomatic family members with cost of up to three thousand pesos per per family member. Uh this is a form of a partial subsidy uh that is being extended. And you can also get financial assistance depending on the severity of the case, covering a one-time confinement for a qualified family member as outlined in the slide. Meanwhile, for our employees who are not covered by the healthcare plan, you will get the following uh financial assistance under the Solidarity Fund. A one-time swab testing with cost up to three thousand pesos for for you if you are symptomatic and of course uh with a doctor's order that you take the swab test. Second, a financial assistance based on the severity of the case covering one-time confinement due to COVID. And then in case your family member is the one who contracts COVID nineteen, the following benefits or the following financial assistance can be avail through the Solidarity Fund. One-time swab testing for a maximum of two symptomatic family members with cost up to three thousand per family member. So same as the other requirements, uh this will need a physician's order. To avail of the financial assistance, you need to submit a letter of request to to Ormod accompanied by proof of the expenses, so your official receipt, using your university-issued email. Ormod will evaluate the request and the assistance will be released to the employee's payroll directly. Please note that the financial assistance will be released only through reimbursement. So kindly complete the requirements to be able to avail of the assistance. Lastly, the Solidarity Fund is also an avenue for us to help each other out. To augment the fund, we are opening it for donations from our fellow employees. I know that many times we have passed the hat uh trying to help out our co-employees, but this time we're we, you have a channel where you can uh send your donations and we can provide assistance to our employees who might be stricken with COVID. So you may give your share by visiting the link posted on the screen uh in the memo that will be released later about the Solidarity Fund. You will, this link will be will be posted also where you can um access it and make your pledges. Ormod will be the one managing the fund and will be responsible for updating the community regularly about the beneficiaries.
Thank you, Mamavik. We have some questions for that. One question is, are part-timers included in the Solidarity Fund?
Yes, yes. They are the ones who are not members of our healthcare plan, so they are also included.
Is COVID covered under the S A T financial assistance?
Yes, also. It's covered under the sickness aid plan. Our um COVID is covered under.
Salamat, Pa. I guess, Father Bobby and Doc Mavick, we still have a lot of questions coming in from the forum as regard to the vaccines. I'll ask, I will will backtrack a bit and also ask these questions. If we avail of a vaccine through a family member's company and we pay, can we have it reimbursed? Any one of you can answer the question, anybody?
Yes, uh uh ju- just to simply put, uh we, at this time, we really do not have guidelines on reimbursing the cost of payment for vaccines received to other private companies. So uh what what I can say now is I think we will discuss this. There's a there's a committee that uh works on these guidelines. We will discuss these particular issues and uh we will give you updates. Uh honestly, we we have not thought about this possibility that uh of reimbursing, but uh but we will consider it and uh we will give you updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Pa. Mamavik, what about contractual faculty who worked full-time in the past year and will be renewed in the first semester but don't have contract or load for the intercession? Can they still sign up as full-time faculty?
Yes, they will be will they will be part of group one.
Father Bobby, this is about a parent. I enlisted my father in the Ateneo University Vaccination Program, but he is bedridden. Will you conduct home vaccinations?
Um I will answer this because I know that uh Q C L G U provides home service for bedridden seniors. Uh I have a personal experience of that, arranging that. Uh and I and I think other L G Us in uh the N C R will also provide home service. So the best, I think, way is is really to to contact your L G U and uh and ask for the home services at the L G U. Um at this time, I think for our own vaccination program, uh we do not have the capability to conduct uh home service vaccination. As we said, uh the vaccines will be stored in uh Loyola Heights Campus and that's why we uh the those who will be vaccinated through the Ateneo Program will have to come personally to the Ateneo Campus. We will have it at the uh Loyola School's covered courts and it will be it will be run by I A L D Health, A C Health. So my my short answer is, I know home service is done, I'm sure by Q C L G U and I would suspect even other L G Us in N C R also provide home service. Thank you.
There's also a clarification question here. Can you clarify the prioritization? Do you mean government prioritization, A one, A two, will be followed for Ateneo Group One, then government priority again for Group Two and so on?
Yes, thank you. This is an important question. Um the the prioritization, as we said, is we have our own Ateneo prioritization. That is what was centered in the memo and explained by Doc Mavick that we have four groups of prioritization ourselves. But uh at this time, we've been discussing this with uh with our with A C Health and and other government officials. Uh at this time, the rules of government is that even if we have our own prioritization, that means our employees first, uh the employees of our affiliates and then our students and our dependents, uh within each particular group, we still have to follow the I A T F, D O H government prioritization of A one, A two, A three, and now we're allowed for A four. Uh so what we will do is, when we start with Group One for Ateneo, that means our employees, full-time, part-time employees, the Jesuits, we will, we will vaccinate according to the, within that group, we will vaccinate according to the government prioritization. So we will start with uh A one, our our frontliners, A two will be the seniors, A three will be those who have comorbidities, A four are those frontliners who are 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 school frontliners who are already reporting on campus, et cetera. We can, we are not allowed to go faster than the government prioritization. So that that's what we mean. We're we're using two groups of prioritization here. Uh we are have our own prioritization for for the supplies that we will procure. We will follow our Ateneo groupings, but within the grouping, our own Ateneo grouping, we have to follow the government prioritization. We start with A one, A two, A three, A four. I hope that is clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Bobby. Doc Mavick, these next next two questions will be probably for you. As a follow-up question for the employees outside N C R, how long is the lead time before the vaccination schedule? I think this is a request. Is it possible to receive the notice on a weekend or at least a week before the confirmed schedule to have enough time to travel back to Kessen City?
We just arranged that uh with uh with A C Health so that uh there is lead time for people to travel to Kessen City.
And another follow-up question for the Solidarity Fund, is it retroactive?
Father Bobby, Father Bobby, my favor.
Uh since I think we have just started it, uh uh it it's not retroactive and uh I think we can even report that uh for certain cases already, we have supported uh COVID cases already, even as apart from the the health insurance that is provided. Uh I don't know if Mavick has the numbers very easy uh available, uh but we have already been uh supporting uh the healthcare benefits of of those who have who have been afflicted with COVID. But for this one, I I think this is a fun moving forward.
Thank you very much, Father Bobby. Ateneo, we have gone through two topics. We are still going through a third one. Finally, Father Bobby, will now give us information about the third program, W A.
Thanks again, Father Johnji. We may sound like a broken record, but indeed, the past year was an extraordinary one. Everything was appended, many things put on hold, and we had to quickly adapt and change. Very happy to say that Ateneo was quick to move from onsite to online operations, from our classes to our day-to-day office transactions, even our admissions, our community events, our formation programs, recollections, and masses, liturgies. We have been able to go online. We have faced a lot of challenges and changes in how we work with our teams and the rest of the university community. Teleconferencing, Zoom meetings, chats, email have replaced face-to-face in-person interaction. We needed to address a lot of new needs and have had to learn new skills, especially for us who are not so techy. I think it is good to realize that at the end of this school year, we are all exhausted by the loss of clear work-life delineations when our offices and our homes have become our offices and our classrooms. The work-life balance and the work-life boundaries are not so clear anymore, and that can be tiring. And of course, we cannot forget those who have been directly affected by the disease and especially those whom we know have passed away, those we have lost. The pain is still fresh in our hearts and minds. Amidst all this, by the grace of God, Ateneo has endured and even thrived. It can be considered a miracle that we are able to quickly steady our operations in the midst of all the seismic changes in the way we have proceeded with our work and our mission. And the most important thing is that we became more mindful, more caring, and more generous with each other. In many ways, the blessing, if we can say this, of this pandemic and the lockdown is that we have become a stronger Ateneo community. I am most thankful to our entire workforce, the most important resource of our university, our faculty, our mators, maintenance and support staff, our professionals, researchers, and our leadership. You have been our most important asset and resource as we navigate this very challenging world of this pandemic. For your general service, we are providing what we are calling Blue Aid, a token of appreciation from the Board of Trustees, the Jesuits, and myself. This Blue Aid is a pandemic assistance. All full-time employees as well as part-time retirees aged sixty years old and above will receive forty thousand pesos. Part-time employees meanwhile will receive a prorated amount based on your number of units or hours in the work during this school year and you will receive an amount somewhere between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand pesos. First of all, Blue Aid, the pandemic assistance, will be credited to your payroll accounts by three P M today. Again, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the Jesuits, this is our small token of appreciation for all the hard work and service you have given Ateneo this past two years. Father Johnji?
Thank you, Father Bobby and Doc Mavick, for the important updates as well as the good news for our employees. Again, we will be making this town hall available on the university YouTube channel later for those who cannot attend. We also invite the community to visit our COVID nineteen portal, COVIDnineteen.ateneo.edu for more information. There you will find information on U V P and will contain updates about the Solidarity Fund and Blue Aid. The formal memos for the later two programs will be released today after this town hall. The COVID nineteen site will also have the F A Qs for the three programs. We end today's gathering by asking the help of our Blessed Mother to place us always close to her side. We end today's gathering by asking the help of our Blessed Mother to place us always close to her side. Thank you for joining today's university town hall meeting with the Father President. We invite you to visit ateneo.edu for regular updates. See you again in the next university town hall meeting. May God bless us all and please stay safe, stay healthy, and have a wonderful weekend.